All right. Good evening, everyone. Good evening. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilwoman Duarte. Thank you very much. I just want to alert you. Can everyone hear me? I guess I could move this closer. Can you hear me? Okay. So I just want to alert you there are two exits. If you have a cellphone, please put it on vibrate or silent. We start off with our speakers list, and after everyone speaks, then the council will respond. Our first speaker is Adrian Allen, and when you come up, please state your name and address for the record. You have four minutes. After the third minute, then the buzzer will go off, and then you have a minute to complete your thoughts. Mr. Allen.
Hi, I'm Adrian Allen, 462 South Fourth Avenue. It's a condo, so I'm Unit 108. Right, okay. Good evening to the council on behalf of the Board of, Board and Owners of 462-468 South Fourth Avenue. I would like to thank the council for taking the time out to hear our sewer issue as a community. We found ourselves here today as recommended by the mayor. This property consists of nine townhouses condos built in 1999. This property has been dealing with frequent sewer backups for the last five years, most of the time without rhyme or reason. During those years, owners have contacted DPW to check the city sewer lines and backups. However, this usually results in late response or no response and/or no confirmation of a response. We believe that all the frequent backups from the city sewer lines have led to the damage of our property sewer line, leading to their nine units. The Hillcrest Condominium Association has spent $6,092, and homeowners collectively have spent $1,600-plus in the past two years. This doesn't include damages to basements from sewer backups. Over the same period, sewer backups intimately affected our low-lying unit, costing our house owner over $600 in time and frustration also. This year, we encountered our largest backup to date, started February 23rd to the 24th, 2020. Multiple units complained about sewer backups at the same time. We hired a plumber to, to ensure that the sewer line was clear because owners were unsuccessful in clearing our house line. The plumber was unable to completely clear our line and was unsure why the line couldn't be completely cleared. We hope that it was a high-demand, high-discharge incident, but unfortunately, we continued to have random backups leading up to May 2020, our largest sewer backup to date. On May 8, 2020, we hired a plumber company to completely, to complete extensive jetting cleaning on our sewer line to ensure our backup wasn't fault to our property sewer line. After the jetting, we completed, we completed, the plumber was still unable to clear the line, viewing it from the camera. The process was considered, this process was considered the best way for sewer lines to be, to be cleaned when clogged. The last and most costly option was digging up the property line, inspecting and replacing it if necessary. We considered it and set a date for March 16. However, Monday evening on May 11, 2020, one of the tenants complained about sewer backups in their basement, and within 12 hours homeowner, homeowner had a sewer pouring into their basement like a water fountain until, until Thursday, May 14, when DPW arrived, approximately 72 hours later. This included me cleaning my basement with household PPE with three inches of sewer on my finished basement floor. On Monday, on Monday, on, sorry, the morning of May 14, we decided to reach out to CMV DPW because we exhausted all of our options, and we continued to have sewer pouring into one of our units. DPW supervisor Ramon Bennett arrived with the crew, the condominium, a few hours after calling. We convinced the crew that the sewage could not be only from our property sewage discharge. Although unbelievable, the first crew decided to, to do further inspection, is that it? Okay, after, after doing the inspection of the city sewer line, clearing a blockage on Sanford and South Fourth Avenue, our property was instantly relieved of the sewer backup from all the units, and DPW confirmed it was a blockage from quote-unquote "ratchnets." Although we are relieved, we knew our sewer line was being compromised over the years, but not, but no proof until May 14. There was indeed a direct correlation between our sewer line and CMV sewer backups prior to this incident. We are all asking the City of Mount Vernon to hopefully reimburse the homeowners and Hillcrest Condominium for sewer-related costs, damages to our sewer line, considering the wear and tear from sewer backups over the years, contributing to cracks or breaks to our sewer line. Thank you for your time, and we hope CMV will do the right thing.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Kevin Harrell?
Good evening. My name's Kevin Harrell. I live at 462 South Fourth Avenue in Mount Vernon. Ms., Ms. Allen is my homeowner, president of Homeowners Manager Association, and I asked to speak, well, first I'd like to thank the council for allowing me the opportunity and to listen to me. I've been a, I grew up in Mount Vernon, and I went away, I moved back in 2000, and I've been a homeowner since then. You know, I pay my taxes, I've been paying them on time without delay since 2004. You know, I'm a taxpayer without any children, and I still pay, you know, the school tax. And I understand that's what community is all about, so I'm not, I don't have a problem with that. I would just like to see this, you know, an improvement in the school system here. But getting to the point where I want to address is, from what Mr. Allen said, I sustained the most damage that night, and I don't even have a final total of how much it is because, you know, I lost my job due to COVID, and I can't afford to replace everything that happened. And it's, that little sewage backup set off a chain reaction to one thing about another. I have to replace my boiler, I have to, I replaced my water, hot water furnace, and because of that leak, it compromised the integrity of my wall, so now I have groundwater coming into my basement. And so, you know, this takes me back to where I began, you know? As a citizen of Mount Vernon, paying my taxes, you know, I keep talking about, you know, there's issues, and I'm, you know, I'm sure there are other residents that got bigger problems than I have. And part of the problem, I take responsibility because in 20 years, this is the first city council meeting I ever attended. So I've been lax, and I can promise you this won't be the last one that I attend. And what, what upset me the most about that evening, we had the sewage backup, I called the Sewers Department after hours. I talked to, nobody was there, I talked to the operator because I couldn't leave a message. The voicemail system was filled up. So the operator, I guess they have a 24-hour answer machine, I got a call back from Department of Water, and they told me that, um, that's a sewage problem. There's nothing that could be done by them, and I would have to wait till the next morning to, to address it with them. Now, I was fortunate that night, I was able to rent a sump pump that would enable me to limit the amount of damage. But, you know, I, I say this as a concerned citizen, that, um, you know, the government of Mount Vernon can do better and must do better for, you know, its citizens. Because if we, if we can't, as citizens, if we can't trust the government to get small things accomplished, how can we have confidence in the ability for, for them to solve any major problems that we may have? Uh, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Harrell. Brian, come up for a second. Michelle Phillips, please. Karen Dockery.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Karen Dockery. I live at 160 Pennsylvania Avenue. I have requested to speak at this meeting to discuss two items: paying taxes and the controller, Deborah Reynolds. In April, when City Hall was closed due to COVID-19, the website provided instructions to pay your taxes online. I was outraged to learn that an online tax payment added an exorbitant fee of $69 to the bill, especially in a time when online payments have become mainstream in our society. My next tax payment was due by July 31st, so I mailed it, a check, to on July 1st. When the check was not cashed by July 15, I called the Finance Department. You could reach other departments, but not the Finance Department. After many attempts, I finally reached someone who said, "We haven't processed all of the mail received in the drop box during the closure." They couldn't tell me if they had or had not received my check. When City Hall reopened from the shutdown, I went in. City Hall was open, but the Finance Department was closed. There was no posted office hours or explanation for the closure. I'm told this happens frequently. There are no consistent hours for the Finance Department. This is ridiculous. I'm trying to pay my taxes, and I have to deal with a department that has total disregard for me as a citizen and taxpayer. It's inconsiderate, disrespectful, and contemptuous. To conduct a Finance Department in this manner is like you're trying to make it fail. Extremely bad business practices. I relate my experience to you as an example of a more systematic problem that the city faces. While I was trying to resolve my personal problem, I discovered there are much bigger financial problems that the city is facing. Here's what I was horrified to learn that the city, that the controller Deborah Reynolds, head of the Finance Department, is doing for the city of Mount Vernon: refusing to accept partial tax payments, refusing to accept 182,000 pilot payments from Mount Vernon Industrial Development Agency, causing title insurance on property sales in Mount Vernon to be scaled back because issuing companies complain that the tax payments are not processed or receipts are not issued, withholding nearly $29 million in tax money due to the Mount Vernon School District, not producing tax records to the school board so they can understand what school taxes have been paid and what is still outstanding, not paying vendors for work already completed, making it difficult to get vendors to work with the city. This is why the paving of the city streets is so far behind, not accepting federal grant money to help to get much-needed lotter trucks, blocking all financial records behind an illegal firewall, not making records of city finances available to elected officials, commissioners, or the public. This action has forced the city to call on the New York State Controller's Office to do a thorough audit of the city's finances. This has to be stopped. It is shameful and embarrassing. I'm shocked and disgusted that the controller is allowed to get away with this behavior. She is not unnecessary, she's causing unnecessary financial loss and strain during a time when people are already suffering from the burdens of COVID-19. I'm sure there are more problems that I don't know about, but I do know this: we can't afford to let Deborah Reynolds destroy our city. Lisa Copeland, I implore you and all the city council to immediately take steps to get her out of office. City council has an alternative that is written into the city code. An elected controller can be removed by the governor, and after charges have been received by the governor, the Attorney General may suspend the officer effective for a period not exceeding 60 days pending the investigation. Let's get her out now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dockery. Marlene Worthheim?
I'm Marlene Worthheim, and I live at 100 Sycamore Avenue. First of all, I just want to tell you, Mr. Holmes, how much I appreciate you and your office. Every time I call, people are so pleasant, so thank you. Folks, times they are a-changing. We have a serious epidemic with no end in sight. People are working remotely, there's massive unemployment, people can't pay rent, their debts, there's so much uncertainty with the possibility of a second wave of the virus, reduced federal-state funding, increased spending on health services, decline in tax receipts. How can investors, financial institutions, and municipal governments be in a position to make long-term commitments? Note that even in the best of circumstances in the past, when Mount Vernon offered pilots, it wasn't uncommon for them not to be paid. New Yorkers are seeking to move away from the cities. They want social distancing, low population density, no traffic congestion, fresh air, green space, open skies, the lack of which research during this time has definitely demonstrated produces a negative impact on health, such as contributing to asthma, which is so prevalent in our city. Your proposals, particularly in Fleetwood, offer the antithesis of this. Development is arbitrary here. We have no comprehensive plan. We're missing a permanent commissioner of planning, as well as any planning administrator. There are no checks and balances as a result, which leaves you, the city council, able to assume lead agency for most of the proposals coming before you. I see our city as very vulnerable at this point. Currently, developers, despite community intervention and protest and with the administration waffling, they've been able to snub our land use boards and proceed with their deceptive plans and construction. My question is, in these changing times, are you going to rise to your commitment to really serve the community that voted you in to look out for our citizens' interests? Our citizens' interests? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Worthheim. Nelda Bianca Bazil?
Good evening, everyone. Madam President, Lisa Copeland, Councilwoman, Mr. Marcus Griffith, Councilwoman Delia Farkason, Councilwoman Janice Duarte, and Councilwoman Derek Thompson. My name is Nelda Bazil, Bianca, I'm sorry, Nelda Bianca Bazil. I am president of the Mount Vernon Organization, We Run Mount Vernon. I live at 407 North McQueston, here in Mount Vernon. I have with me today Tamara, our secretary, our Director of Communication, Ms. Tricia Fraser, and Angela White, our treasurer. We are thankful for the opportunity to present to you the vision, the mission of We Run Mount Vernon, which will hold its first annual 5K Turkey Trot event in Mount Vernon on Saturday, November 21st, 2020. The experts tell us that physical fitness is one of the sharpest ways to improve our quality of life as we grow older and to improve the health of the community as a whole. We believe that introducing the community to a 5K run-walk is a way for families to come together around the area of fitness. We want fitness, health, and wellness to become second nature to the community, like brushing our teeth when we first wake up in the morning. COVID-19 is a reality today, and we are painfully aware of the ravages of this new disease. In addition to the precautions that all of us must take to stay safe, we believe that physical fitness provides an additional and fun way to fight the virus. Physical activities and movement will help to reduce the risk of viral infections and lower the chances of getting or hosting chronic illnesses. Participation in our first annual 5K Turkey Trot event will be a significant change to our lifestyle and will help build areas of protection around our hearts and contribute to our quality of life and longevity. We would like the 5K Turkey Trot to become our signature event in our community and a national, a natural extension to the other services we provide, such as an adult walk-in group, Saturday Children's Fitness, Monday Morning School Fitness Program. Our adult walk-in group, to let you know, includes a 72-year young elder from Mount Vernon, and she does a 5K with us every Monday and every Saturday morning. In closing, let me quote the words of one of our most, of one of our American essayists and poet, Mr. Henry David Thoreau, "An early morning walk is a blessing for the whole day." As an avid walker and marathoner, you can also quote me in saying that a 5K Turkey Trot is a blessing for life. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Ms. Evelyn Feldman?
Good evening. My name is Evelyn Feldman, and I live at 12 East Theater Street. I'm speaking tonight to a proposal and zoning change for an eight-story development with 53 car parking added to where today Fleetwood Pharmacy is located and that Starbucks was promised. Whoever invited to expand 505 Gramerton without all the proper land use board and site plan approvals and is now suggesting such ill-fitting structures into our neighborhood is exercising in front of this community a complete lack of understanding what this zip code needs, why a zoning map exists, how to fortify a pedestrian-friendly business center, and how much times have changed. I find it of unconscionable and offensive conduct to individuals of this body to solicit more population density that themselves know is exploiting our infrastructure, is detrimental to our health, the value and quality of the city. Now, it is of utmost importance to exercise the diligence and in seeking opportunities that are aligned with post-pandemic needs. Many of such new service models would fit fine into this parcel's existing zone at 505 Gramerton Avenue. A pharmacy and coffee shop should utilize and see the benefit of the open space, not for adding cars, but to provide plenty of shade with trees, tables, and benches. A business, the pedestrian community that exists there, would embrace. While the advancement of new, new comprehensive plan should be a priority, to reestablish a solid planning process should be our concern. In current absence of any educated professionals filling the respective roles in our Department of Planning and Community Development, this body is not serving the citizens by advancing projects of such adversity. This would be a terrible mistake.
Thank you, Ms. Feldman. Tricia Fraser?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen and others. I'm Tricia Fraser of 666 North Tewksbury Avenue, Mount Vernon, New York. Last year, I produced the first Living My Best Life Health Fair. I'm looking to turn it into an annual event. In 2019, we kicked off the Health Fair with a one-mile run-walk within Hartley Park. We also had Deja Stevens, the track and field Olympian, as our race ambassador. Following the one-mile walk, we had activities in three zones: health screening, children's zone, and fitness zone. Within the health screening zone, we screened for BMI, blood pressure, and cholesterol. We also had NYU Langon providing testing for sleep apnea. Within the children's zone, we had world-renowned chess expert Rochelle Ballantyne battling five people simultaneously in chess. The fitness zone had instructors who were performing yoga sessions, Zumba, and Tai Chi. This year, my goal is to produce a hybrid Health Fair on October 3. What I mean by hybrid is not only will we do it on-site, but it would also be virtual following the COVID-19 protocols. So for example, we would have a maximum of 100 to 200 people within the Health Fair Zone. Everyone has to wear a mask. Face shields will be provided for all vendors and instructors, and anyone entering the Health Fair Zone, their temperature will be taken. We're going to have volunteers who are HCP, healthcare professionals, providing those temperature tracks. So I'm asking Madam President Lisa Copeland, Councilwoman Marcus Griffith, Councilwoman Derek Thompson, Councilwoman Janice Duarte, and Councilwoman Delia Farkason for your support for this year's October 3 Health Fair when it comes on the docket. Thank you, and be safe.
Thank you, Ms. Fraser. Jeff Monroe?
My name is Jeff Monroe. Good evening, honorable council members, neighbors, good evening. I'd like, I'd like to, I'd like to start actually first by, by expressing my dismay at the last council meeting, where I, Frank, far as I'm concerned, I saw probably the best Frank, far as I'm concerned, I saw probably the best example of neo-colonialism in Mount Vernon, um, a better example of abuse of black power over black people at the behest of unseen white power, uh, better than most political science educators I've ever listened to. To actually see, uh, security called on me by a, a black woman and a black man for ostensibly no threat whatsoever was an interesting thing to witness in the summer of 2020. So, having said that, I'll move on. Um, I've asked in the last five months of our comptroller, our mayor, and the Oversight Committee Chair of Finance where the actual items for budget of PEG services were coming from. I've asked about the, the budgeted, uh, I don't have the numbers in front of me. I think it was, I won't quote the numbers, but there were budgeted numbers of revenue and budgeted numbers of expense. No one was able to answer that question. Uh, Councilmember Copeland actually did answer at one point something to the effect of taxes, which are actually, um, inaccurate in that PEG services are granted. They are not a tax item. Um, and of course, it's well within the bailiwick of our Chair of Finance to actually explain that, and yet I've heard nothing from Councilman Griffith. I'd like to still know where that is considering that council is now bequeathing, uh, several thousand dollars over to the mayor's office for, um, public relations and media strategies. Obviously, media strategies are not a problem. Obviously, they're not bad business. The question though is what are happening, what, what's happening to the dollars being bequeathed to the city ostensibly the executive branch from our consumers of cable television, spectrum, and Verizon files, I presume. I presume that the PEG access fees that are traditionally charged to our consumers are going somewhere, and I'm presuming that those services are being spent in some way by the city. I know we have some PEG service, but I'm not clear on what those services look like because again, our council and our mayor has not seen to properly activate our Cable Television Advisory Committee to properly advise our community as to what those services should look like and how they actually could benefit the consumers and our, uh, not just consumers but our, our residents as well as our officials. Um, it's a little bewildering. It's a little, it's a little bewildering to me why in 20, in the 21st century, our community can't have one of the, the most, um, the most necessary internet-friendly electronic media that every other borough in New York City and most major urban centers I'm aware of actually utilize at very little cost to the community or the city itself. So if I could get those answers, I'd appreciate it. Uh, finally, one other question regarding our CCRB. Um, I sat on the committee for over two years trying to draft a, a document that was prematurely legislated as an actual, um, policy. Uh, it was never budgeted, and yet our mayor has now commissioned two deputy commissioners, one of which is assigned to deal with CCRB, which was never the intent. A fully civilian CCRB is what Mount Vernon deserves, and in 2020 should not even be a point of debate. So I'm wondering, so I'm wondering what's going on with that as to the, um, the policy of CCRB from our city council. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Monroe. Sid, uh, Michelle Phillips come in. Michelle Phillips? Okay, um, we're gonna ask the council people to respond. Start with, uh, Councilman Griffith.
Madam President, I'm looking for some information. Could you skip me and come back?
Uh, fine. It's a plan. Ain't nothing for you. Uh, legislation, I mean, uh, Councilwoman Duarte?
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening to everyone, and thank you for coming this evening. To those that are new, welcome, and I applaud you for the courage to come and speak to us because sometimes that can be intimidating, and certainly we are here for you to, uh, come and speak to the council and address your concerns anytime, um, you wish. So, uh, starting with Mr. Adrian Allen, I'll address both Mr. Allen and Mr. Harold because it's the same issue. Um, I, when, I saw your, uh, letter or your requested, uh, documents that you provided in anticipation of your attendance here tonight, and I forwarded them to DPW and requested a report of the, um, timeline that you provided. I want to know exactly what they have in their records, how they responded, when they responded, and what their reports show, um, so that I can fully engage in a conversation with them as to what happened, so I understand from their perspective, um, as well as how do we move forward and, and provide some sort of resolution to the challenges you have faced and the damages that you have incurred. So if, um, I don't know if we'll have a break between our, uh, comments and our legislative session, but I'd like to be able to speak to you offline and, and also engage Corporation Council to, to address some of the issues you mentioned. I mean, no doubt sewers, the sewer infrastructure is a major issue for the city. I think we all are very aware of that. Um, financially, it's, it's also challenging. Um, we, we have lots of issues, um, around the city due to the aging infrastructure, and, uh, and so, you know, it's, it's not unique, but we want to address your specific situation directly. Ms. Dockery, um, with regards to the challenges that you have faced, I'm sorry that it is that hard to pay your property taxes. Um, I'm sure it's difficult enough to have to provide handover your hard-earned money, um, and then on top of that, still have the challenges of actually executing, um, your responsibility and duty that you're trying to comply with. So I'm, I'm sorry that that's the experience you've had. Unfortunately, this is not the first time I've heard that complaint. And, uh, it is, it is very challenging because there is no transparency into the finance department, and when questions are asked, we don't get direct answers. Um, and know that we are, as a council, very much, um, committed to addressing our finances and also the transparency of the finances. Now, that's not going to be an easy task because the comptroller isn't elected, and as such, the standards by which she can be held accountable are a lot higher. And so, uh, you know, she has, she has put up quite, um, quite an effective, uh, defense, I, I should say. Uh, if you can call it that. I'm not really sure what to call it. Um, but she's been very effective at avoiding and, um, deceiving and, uh, and, and simply, uh, being non-compliant and, and, and doing that in a way, that I think exceeds anybody's expectation of what a professional, um, what professional conduct and being responsible to the duties of her office would, would demonstrate. So, um, while that does not satisfy you immediately, um, please know that the council is committed to, uh, taking measures that we can take legislatively. Um, and we have been working with the, the Office of the State Comptroller. Uh, we have provided extensive information and documents to them, um, individually, collectively. I know the administration has done so as, as well. So we'll continue leveraging the agencies that oversee her office, to the, to the best that we can. Ms., uh, so I'm going to address Ms. Nelda Bianca Bazil and also Tricia Fraser, just because they're similar events, uh, all with regards to community health. And so I, um, Ms. Fraser, you had an event last year. It was your first event of that kind in Hartley Park. And, um, and Ms. Bazil, you're looking to post your first annual event, um, incidentally on my birthday. So, I, I applaud both the efforts to, to continue to advance commu- uh, community health and ways in which the community can be engaged and promote, uh, health and well-being across the board. You know that we have, um, we have a lot of health issues in this community, um, some of them endemic to the minority community. However, it's, it, we have to recognize the demographics of our city and how widespread that issue actually is across, um, more than half of our community. Um, and we have chronic health issues and so on and so forth, mental health issues. So there's a lot that we need to do. So every bit of support and effort that our community members make towards that, uh, health and well-being end is very much needed and very much appreciated. I will say though, once we receive your applications, we will review them, but understand that given the current circumstances, guidelines from the CDC, um, regulations or, um, in- information provided by the state governor, that at, we may be limited in what we're permitted to allow, uh, with regards to public events like that. So far, the applications that we have received for block party events, um, have not been considered for the reason that we don't, are not permitted to allow them. So just, just bear that in mind, and hopefully by October and by November, we, we're not experiencing such a, um, a similar wave as we experienced in the spring. There's different information that you get. Some say it's going to be worse. I pray that it's not, um, but just keep that in mind and, and, um, the worst-case scenario is that it may need to be deferred to next year. So just keep that in mind, um, because we need to be compliant, uh, with the state mandates and what we're permitted to do. Ms., okay. Ms. Worthheim and Ms. Feldman? Um, I wholeheartedly agree that we need to advance the comprehensive plan. Um, it's been put on hold for quite some time. No one expected pandemic to exist. I know that has pushed a lot of things onto the back burner, but I think it's fair enough that, uh, we can engage the administration and begin, um, and revisit, have, completing the comprehensive plan. Um, I think it's even more important now than before, given the pandemic. There's a lot of, uh, information and studies that are being done with regards to design and to development and what, uh, what that means given the current state, um, uh, during COVID, post-COVID. I mean, a lot of people are saying post-COVID, but I think a lot of the, uh, the, uh, practices that are coming out of the current, uh, situation are going to be there long-term. They're not going to go away, and those need to be included and considered in how we develop, uh, in this city and the types of developments that we need, uh, for our citizens. Um, because no doubt we have need. The county housing need assessment has demonstrated we have a need, but the question is, what is the need in Mount Vernon and how do we address it? And how do we develop in a way that is responsible, that serves the needs, but also allows the city to economically develop and be viable? And, Mr. Monroe? Uh, I wholeheartedly agree that we need to look at and, and get that cable contract moving, get some more information. I just want to note that I did meet with the mayor, um, back in February before everything shut down to discuss some items. Uh, one of them was the cable contract. Uh, I suggested that that would be, uh, that it'd be an important initiative. At that time, she indicated that was, there was progress on that, but of course, once the, the, everything shut down, I really don't know where that was left. And with the regard, regards to the CCRB, you're absolutely right. We need to, we need to be, um, we need to provide funding for it, so identify the funding and allocate it so that we can fully execute what that means. And I think now having the two deputy commissioners, um, gives us the bandwidth to fully execute on that, uh, on that commitment. Uh, and that's, and that's my, um, my hope. So I think that concludes my remarks for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilman Thompson?
Uh, good evening, everyone. Um, you know, I, I hear your concerns. Uh, you know, one of the ones that really troubles me is the Fourth Avenue, um, sewage backup, um, that is going into the homes. And that's bothersome to me because it doesn't matter where you live in Mount Vernon, north, south, east, or west. Your taxes is enough for sewers not to back up into your home. Um, you know, and it, and it's a necessity that Mount Vernon steps up and do what we have to do to make sure that our infrastructure as well as our sewer system is taken care of because for far too long, we have been neglected. So when the time comes, we need you to work along with us when we step forward and take actions because this, this is a dire need. I used to live on the corner of, uh, Fourth Avenue and Fifth Street, um, many years ago, and things like this did not happen. So we have to make sure that we, um, prevent this from happening. And I don't, I don't know if you ever, I've seen houses with sewage backup, and it is some of the most disgusting thing, um, that you would ever want to see. And no one deserves to live in that kind of environment for a minute. Not mu- not less than, uh, not much less than a day in a month and however long it, it goes on, um, within your household. So I apologize for the city for that. Um, I'm gonna look into this a little further and work along with the body, um, the council body to make sure that we enact on this and, and bring some justice to the community for this failing sewer system. Because every day that we don't attend to it, it worsens, and we cannot live in an environment like that. It's unhealthy and it's unethical. Uh, with that being said, you know, we, we definitely have problems with our comptroller. We understand that. Uh, it's been verbalized. It has been visualized. We know what needs to be done. We have been doing things on that part, but when the time comes, we need to, the community to work along with us to make sure that the proper things are being taken care of. Uh, we, we like everything. We're, we're microwave people, right? We like things to happen instantly. However, there is a protocol for everything that has to happen. So when we want things to run smoothly and we want things to be legit, we have to follow protocol so things don't slip through the loophole, right? So with that being said, we're gonna work diligently to, um, you know, hold our comptroller accountable and do what needs to be done for our city because for far too long, we have been suffering under people's abuse of power and not doing what's right by the people of the city that they serve. And at the end of the day, each one of us elected officials, the council persons, the mayor, and the comptroller, we were elected to do a job. And some people have failed in the position they in, they are in. So when it's time to re-elect these persons, if they're not doing right by our city and the city that we love and live in, it is time to vote them out. And we have to take that to heart because if we don't see these people who serve our city doing right by our city and in and throughout our community, it is time for a change. And we have to remove them and get people in place who want to do the right thing by our city. It is unacceptable to me, and I hope it is unacceptable to you. So when the time is right, you do the right thing and vote the necessary people in place to get the job done. Um, also, um, regarding our, uh, CCRB, uh, those who don't know what CCRB is, it's the, um, Civil Complaint Review Board. Um, you know, thing, things are still, uh, you know, unfortunately due to COVID, so many things have, uh, fell behind, but, uh, you know, we're working diligently. Uh, you know, un- unfortunately, our, uh, district attorney that we currently have, uh, has not been doing his part, and you know, I never sugarcoat anything, so I like to call- And you know, I never sugarcoat anything, so I like to call it as it is. And, um, being that he has not been doing his part, thank God the people voted for Mimi Roper. And they must do the same in November so we can make sure that we hold our law enforcement, who are not doing right by our citizens, accountable. And we need a district attorney who is unafraid, uh, to handle business. So, um, you know, you have several council members here who are unafraid to handle business and do what's right and do what's necessary for the community. However, when the buck is passed, remember that protocol I told you about? When you have to go to the next level, those in those other positions have to follow suit and do what's necessary for the community. So, um, I'm looking forward to a new district attorney so we can start holding people accountable, um, in those areas. But with that being said, in no way, shape or form do I think all of our police officers are, um, corrupt. Because we have several good police officers within our community doing the right thing and, um, making great changes in and throughout our community. So I believe that's all I have. Yes, and the last thing was the online payments. When adding sixty-nine dollars to online payments, that is absurd. It's supposed to be easier for you to make payments online, um, without, that's like a penalty that you didn't ask for. So I'll be, um, speaking to the comptroller. I have been emailing our comptroller, uh, continuously, trying to get some resolve. However, for some reason, she thinks that she's in a, a government by her lonesome and she doesn't have to answer to anyone, but a change will come. And we have to be patient, we have to be diligent and work together to make sure that, uh, accountability is, um, held. So with that being said, uh, Madam Mayor, that's all I have. And, um, we just ask for your patience because we know it looks, it looks gloomy, but at the end, it's gonna be wonderful.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Councilwoman Farkasen?
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening to the community. Thank you for being here. It is, um, encouraging that you are here in spite of the pandemic, that our democracy continues to grind forward. So thank you for being courageous and being here. I myself, um, I'm here with some trepidation. So, um, so it is good that you are here. That's very encouraging. Thank you. So Mr. Allen and Mr. Harrell. Let me first apologize to you. Because I cannot imagine the conditions under which you have been existing for these many years. It is dreadful. And I must say that it is clearly obvious that our failing sewer system is not able to handle all that is being thrown at it. And that overflow ends up in the basements of poor folks like you. And that's very unfortunate. The sad reality is that you are not alone, that we've had plenty of complaints about that. And I implore this body, when we think about bringing other developments and housing, especially multiple units, that we think about Mr. Harrell and Mr. Allen, who must live with sewer in their basements because our sewer system is not able to tolerate everything. And the focus should be on remedying whatever is causing the buildup in these basements, rather than adding more to the system. So I think that should be the ask to all of you. Is that when we look at development, we should say, pause. Until you fix the sewer backup in my basement, do not add another flush to the system. So that is my counsel to all of you. Because it is clearly obvious that our system cannot tolerate everything that is being thrown at it. My hope is that Councilwoman Duarte, working with the Department of Public Work, will be able to get to the bottom of it. And my hope and prayer is that it will be resolved and you will never again have sewer in your basement. So my sincere apologies to both of you and to all your neighbors for what you have endured. Ms. Dockery, thank you for being here, madam, and for bringing that list, um, of items that are well-known to all the community, the complaints against the comptroller's office. Because we don't have full information and access, it is difficult for me to assess whether all of those things are true or not. But that's beside the point. The Office of State Comptroller is conducting an audit. And as part of that audit is, is process. And they have actually completed a portion of that audit and it has been submitted to us in draft form. It's not available yet to the public. But I expect that it will be shortly and you yourself will be able to review it, see the recommendations and then draw your own conclusions. In the meantime, can the comptroller be more, um, compliant, helpful? I'm sure there are many people who would agree with you. During the shutdown, I did have a complaint from another, um, neighbor who said that she was asked to pay, I think it was seventy-something dollars based on her taxes. And I found that like really sad because I think what we're doing is we're using an outside service to collect the taxes. And that to me, um, it seems like something that should be remedied relatively easily, that we should be able to use, um, model what other municipalities use that does not cost a, an arm and a leg to be able to collect our taxes. So I will, um, I, I will ask the chairperson and the, um, co-chair of the finance department to encourage the finance department to look at other solutions that do not cost our taxpayers anything additional. And even if there's a fee, that that fee is applied on the back end as a credit so that there is no cost to paying your taxes because that's double taxation and that's not good. So, um, I, I hope that we can find a remedy for that, for that issue. I hope it's not true, you know, what you are speculating, that these practices that are coming out of the finance office is meant, meant for the demise of our city. Because that would be horrible for all of us. So I hope that's not true and we can get to a resolve sooner rather than later. But thank you for coming and sharing your concern. Ms. Worthheim and Ms. Feldman, both of whom I've worked with on the three ordinance, which is unfortunately not on the agenda this evening, but I fully expect it will be on the agenda for September. We are that close, Mr. May, that close. So in terms of development, I agree with you that, and you know, it, it was, it was kind of surreal, the presentations on Monday evening, where everybody comes in to ask for the extension, um, of the senior overlay zone, as if that's some kind of backdoor window to get development done. Again, and I said it on Monday and I just heard Councilwoman Duarte repeat it, is that we have, um, a needs assessment, a housing needs assessment that was completed by the county and it should be used as a guiding instrument. We must complete our comprehensive plan. And we should not be moving forward with these archaic designs that do not consider, uh, the pandemic and the impact of COVID-19. We should not be moving forward with any design that does not now take into consideration the new realities with which we are living. So my hope is that, yeah, we'll put a pause on it, that we will realize that we are a dense city and Governor Koma could not have said it enough during the pandemic. Every time he did, um, a press, he said, density is the enemy. We are the second-densest city in the country. And so because of that, because of that, right? We were desperately affected by COVID-19 and it's not gone. And so because we are so dense, we shouldn't be looking to make ourselves any more dense. And while housing is needed, we should be smart about the kind of housing we are adding to our stock. Just today, Anitra Hadley sent me an article where Rockland County is selling property, foreclosed property, the habitat for humanity, to be repurposed for homeless people in the community or for poor people in the community. Those are the kinds of policies we should be pursuing as a city. One, because we are a primarily black and brown city, desperately affected by oppression and white supremacy, right? We understand that the kinds of poverty that we're seeing here is as a result of exploitation. And this body has the opportunity to take a strong stand and to say, no mass, no more. Let us house our people. I see people sleeping on the park benches, walking around with their belongings. There are people in need and the housing assessment from the county provides us with, with guidance. No more high-rise building that's gonna add density to this city and put us all at risk. So, let me get off the soapbox. I, I agree that, that our land use boards, um, I'm sure that they're educating themselves and they are taking the experience being taught by this cor- this coronavirus experience and putting that into their decision-making. So I, 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 I expect that, that we'll see that reflected in the kinds of things that are suggested for building in our city. So again, thank you both for coming and for sharing. Ms. Basil and, um, Ms. Frazier, I think Councilwoman Duarte said it best, that we must be guided by the environment at the time, right? So we don't know what it will be like and we really must be cautious, right? Because we know COVID has not gone away. It's still with us and so we must be careful. And so our decision-making has to take into consideration not just, uh, um, health and well-being from a physical health perspective, physical activity perspective, but you know, from, from the pandemic side, through those lens. I've recently started walking myself more. I used to walk, but Lord, it used to take me forever. But now I'm walking much more and I, and I, I, I think it's a great thing. And I think you can send that message and promote that message in our community. Even if you don't do your, uh, activities this year, there are other ways to get that message out. Just coming here in your beautiful shirts and, you know, speaking so eloquently to this, to the topic is, is a, is a great thing. So I suggest you continue to do that, to promote health and well-being because, yeah, we should be a healthier community. And, and I'm telling you, people are moving. When I walk in the mornings, like everybody is walking. So we know that it's made a difference. So please continue to do what you do. And thank you for being here. So Jeff Monroe, um, the CCRB, you're right. I was the, um, councilperson that put that through in deference to Councilman, um, Jana Edwards, who's put a lot of work into the CCRB. Now the argument is shifting about the Civilian Complaint Review Board. And in New York City, councilperson, um, Baron is suggesting that members of the CCRB should be elected because they should be devoid of influence. And you know, what you said is that, you know, that, uh, now it's being treated as something that should be managed and quarrelled. It has to be organic and come from the community. It must represent the community because it's about holding the department responsible for their actions. I'll say again that we must encourage full participation, community forums, where we're gonna be talking about what public safety will look like for the future in our community. And I look forward to being a part of that discussion. Councilwoman Duarte and I chair and co-chair public safety and we have already engaged, um, or with, um, one, one of the deputy commissioners, um, along that way. So, um, thank you for being here. And, uh, you know, yeah, that, that incident back, um, when was that, in July? When, you know, you were not allowed to speak because you were not here. I did not agree with that decision-making, but it's in the past and I hope it never happens again. So, um, you know, so sorry you had to endure that. In terms of the budget for the PEG, we need to know. It needs to be clear. We should have copies of the check presented so that we know how much is being deposited and what the money is being used for. As for me, I think any money that's, um, realized from, for, for, um, public access should be put back into just that, into closing the digital divide for those who cannot afford it, into providing a studio that's accessible for everyone. So doing the things that's going to really promote public access in our community. Thank you all for being here and, um, stay safe. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Councilman Griffiths?
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you for, um, giving me the opportunity to continue to look for, uh, the information I was looking for. I was not able to find it where I thought it was, um, but still, I'm gonna try to get that information. Mr. Allen and Mr. Harrell, uh, thank you both for coming. If you noticed that I was on my phone while you were talking, whenever people give me an address, I try to make sure I look at the address so I can physically put it in my mind exactly, uh, where you're talking about. So when I'm out in the street and by that way, I cut that way. When you gave me your address, I kind of figured, oh, where I thought your property was, but I was completely wrong. I thought you were speaking about the development that's right across the street from you. And here's the difference. I didn't really notice that your development area, your little area, your little cutout there was there because it is so well-maintained, right? So I'm giving you the compliment, you and your residents a compliment. It is so well-maintained, you zip right by it, it's so clean, it's so nice. I, I hardly realized that it was there. So that's a compliment to you and your neighbors, how you keep your property. Um, as far as these sewer backups, I wish there was a way or I wish one of your residents had called me because I've, I've been in, in your situation before. And it's a, it's a shame that you couldn't call the city and the city resolve it for you or at least give you insight as to what the problem could have been before you went through all of that pain. Because sewage backups are horrible, horrible. And I know because I clean them quite often. So the city council in, in our own wisdom, um, made sure that we spent a million dollars on two pieces of equipment, one being a very large power washer truck that's almost the size of an eighteen-wheeler, right? And with the purpose of cleaning out sewer lines for the maintenance of them. We also purchased a, um, a video camera machine just for the sewer lines so that we can go in there and see what the problems are. So I, I feel horrible that you had to go through that pain trying to resolve it yourself, thinking it's you. And I know when people call the city, the city has a way of making you think it's your problem, right? So you do what you think is best and try to resolve it yourself, only to find that it wasn't your problem and it was the city's problem. And I've seen this instance many times. One example is, um, I know a lady that has a problem, but she lives in like a little gully and she always had the sewer crew come out and clean right outside her area, thinking that was the problem. But one older gentleman came over and said, it's not here. It's across the highway, down the road, by some apartment buildings, a few blocks away. And if you clean that out, it's gonna clean everything over here out. Sure enough, that worked. So now she knows what to tell DPW to do when she has a backup. Should it be like that? No. Um, but that's, that's where we are. So, um, I think what you may need to do with your residents is write a, um, a, a strong letter to the legal department and ask for a refund of your, um, sewer backup. I think that's what you need to do. Because another thing people do is think that you could just come to the city and ask for... you could just come to the city and ask for the money back. It doesn't quite work like that. I suggest you both get together with your residents and pool together to get that fixed legally, right? So I think that's what you need to do. But I definitely feel your pain. I've been there before. I had an instance where at my church, we couldn't figure out why the sewer was backing up. We had to call somebody and he came over, tried his thing. He walked in the middle of Lincoln Avenue. He opened up the manhole, looked down and said, this isn't your problem, it's the city's problem. Really? City came in, cleared it out, it was fixed. So I wish you had called before, I wish I knew. I would have told you that suggestion and it shouldn't be like that. So I apologize. Ms. Dockery, thank you. You have a very comprehensive list of our pain with the controller. I can tell you that because of the state audit, we've taken some action. That audit is not public yet. I was not very pleased with the state controller's portion of the audit, but we have taken some action. Even today, we've borne the legislation and I know people leave right after the speaking session. But even today, I have as legislation asking for the controller to provide by noon tomorrow a complete list of all of the city Mount Vernon's bank accounts and trust accounts along with the bank statements and reconciliations for the year 2017, 18, 19, and 20. Here's the problem. We've asked for this numerous times before. What was provided to us last Friday was a list of two bank names down maybe 25 columns with no account numbers and no balances. Quite frankly, it was highly insulting, not only to me and the council, but to all of the residents of Mount Vernon. I tell people, we don't have a clue what's going on in our city financially and it's all because of the controller. Big problem. So your list is very comprehensive. Tell as many people as you know. Because like Councilman Thompson said, elections have consequences and we need to repair it. I don't think the governor's coming to help us, even though it is in our charter for him to help us in these regards. I have a strong feeling he's not going to do that, even though I feel we really need it. So we have a lot of work to do and we're going to continue to pass legislation. We have full support from the council to do as much as we can. I don't know if we're going to have her removed, but we're definitely not getting the answers that we deserve to report to the community. So thank you for that. Mrs. Feldman and Ms. Wertheim, thank you very much. Councilwoman Farquharson did say that the tree ordinance is very, very, very close. We had a fresh read of it in our last packets and yes, I believe in September it will be passed. So that's good news. As far as development, I can tell you that the council just doesn't let development come in and ruin our city. There's been a lot of development that's come in and we totally reject. For example, Ms. Wertheim, by you, Bradford Road came in again with their development in Wilson Woods. And quite frankly, I was flabbergasted at their approach again to the city of Mount Vernon. And I warned them, this council is not taking it lightly, your approach in our community. And as much as we want good business in, we're not going to have people take advantage of us. So rest assured, I know I have the backing of this council when we have the next discussion with them about what they will and will not do in our park. So thank you for, and thank you for coming. Mrs. Feldman, I know you're very concerned about Gramerton Avenue. We've been down a very long road right there in your block, really. I have to say though, the application that came in looked better than most applications that have come in along the lines. But even that still has a long process to go through. The council going over a senior overlay zone is not really a bad thing. The real details that need to go in is through the planning board, the architecture review board, and the zoning board. So even though we may pass this tonight, it's still a long road before it goes forward. And I just want you to know that there's more than just the council voting on one piece. But I thank you for that. Nelda and Tricia, thank you both very much. I think in your applications to the council to have your events, what needs to set you different is that you explain how COVID will not impact your application, right? So Janice Dworky was correct. We have a lot of organizations sending in the same application that they did last year. Not going to work. So I think you both have an opportunity to inject how COVID was not going to stop these events happening, especially if it's a walking event. Make sure you explain how people are going to be spaced out, that sort of thing. And I think this council would look at it differently than just saying it's not going to work. And I know you both, we've worked together both on multiple events, so I know it's going to work. And if you need any help with that, let me know. Mr. Monroe, I want to apologize to you. When you sit up there and try to navigate everything that's going on, especially with COVID, especially with people on Zoom, especially with people in the audience, it is quite confusing. And what happened last meeting was bizarre and unnecessary. When I have to sit up there, it's hard navigating with people talking to you here on that screen and everywhere. So I'm going to apologize to you. And also, the information that you need, I spent time to look for because the best way to apologize to somebody is to give them what they're requesting so that we can all move forward. I was not able to find that information, but I'm going to make sure I look for it for you because we all deserve financial information as it comes into city. So I hope you accept my apology. I hope you understand that running a meeting with people coming from different things is not as easy as it appears to be and I hope to make it up to you. Because we have a history together doing multiple things and talking about things in detail. And I hope that satisfies that. I think I reached everybody. Thank you so much for coming out today. Yes?
Okay. Thank you, all of you. You've said a lot, so I'm not going to repeat what you said. But I'm going to address, I'm going to address just a few things. And we will take a break because I can't sit too long with my knee. Well, anyway, it's not important. We'll take a break because I have to stand up and I didn't want to do it while you all were speaking. So Ms. Dockery, I myself, as well as several people in the governor's administration, have reached out to him regarding this issue. We've sent video of meetings. We've sent things that have happened. He's really not interested in getting involved in that manner. The state controller has been very helpful in telling us how we can legislate to try to move things, to make our case so that we can move it forward. And I did see your email, I did forward it on to the chief of staff and I did make a call. We make calls to the controller's office. Unfortunately, we're not treated, I hope you're treated better than we are. Let me say that. And I think Councilwoman Farquharson had mentioned about when you pay online, it's a fee because it's an outside company and that's how they get paid. We certainly should look at a different way of doing it. I agree. Other municipalities do it in-house and I don't know why we can't with the amount of people who work in that office. Councilman Griffiths, I hate to correct you, but every now and then I will. The item you speak of is not on the agenda, on our 27-item agenda. It's not on this evening because it requires some additional work to be done.
Which item?
The floating zone, the senior zone, that's not on tonight.
Oh, yeah, that's fine.
There was no way anything like that could move anyway. So let me see, what else? You all beat the other thing to death. So thank you all for coming. Mr. Monroe, we have such a long history. I'm not going to respond right here on the mic. I'm going to speak to you personally because I was a bit offended, but that's okay. I've been offended many times because I'm an ambitious, anyway, I digress. But what I did say on the cable bills, there's a local franchise tax and that's what comes to the city, part of your cable bill. That's the fund that we wanted to have audited, which we also wrote to the control several times about. That money is supposed to be separated, but historically it has been going into the general fund and not being separated out. That's what I said. But anyway, thank you all for coming. We're going to take a break so the council people can talk to you and so you can stretch your legs. I'm so glad to see you all out. Continue to mask yourselves. We're still in the midst of a pandemic, amongst other things, but I appreciate you all coming out. We'll take a five-minute break.
I appreciate you all coming out. We'll take a five-minute break. No, I'm not. Well, come back to. He said it just like she wrote it. Okay, are we back? Here it is, because I can't, I'm not gonna, I'm sorry. It's too sweet. I see legislation in public works is not here, so we'll start with you, Councilman. It's 20 minutes. What happened? We'll talk about that. Are we ready? Are we back live? Councilwoman Duarte, legislation in public works?
Thank you, Madam President. Item number three is held. Item number four is held. Item 14 was on the agenda pending, but it's not on the agenda, so that's called for. Item 15 is for information. Item 17 is for information. Item 18 is called for. Item 30 is for information. Item 31 is on the agenda, enumerated number one. Item 49 is for information. Item 50 is for information. Item 51 is on the agenda as number two. Item 55 is on the agenda as number three. Item 56 is on the agenda as number four. Item 57 is on the agenda as number five. And item 58 is on the agenda as number six. And item 73 is called for, and I don't believe I have any add-ons, so that concludes my report. Thank you. Human Resources?
Thank you, Madam President. I have items 13, which was for information. Items 59, 60, 61, 62, 63, 64, 65, as well as the add-on that was broken down into parts, which addressed the Armory as well as the Dole Center. Those are all on the agenda. That's all I have.
Thank you. Public Safety and Codes?
Thank you, Madam President. I have item number one for information. Item number two is called for. Item number five is called for. Item number six is called for. Item number 22 is for information. Oh, I think I called for it. Item number 25 is for information. 26 and 28 are for information. Item number 29 is on the, no, it's called for. We changed it. It's called for. Item number 33 is for information. Item number 37, Public Safety Reclassification, is on the agenda. Item number 38 and 39 are for information. Item number 40, I requested to have contact with the Finance Department, because I had it on pending. And I don't know if we have, Deputy Clerk, do you know if we reached out to the Finance Department to find out whether, what the balance is in that line? Because I had it on pending, and it's enumerated as Dell. As 24. So, yeah, I don't know what the balance is, so I'm gonna call for that. Item number 41 is on the agenda. Item number 42 is for information. Item number 43, same thing, was on pending. I'm gonna call for that. Item number 44, same thing. I'm gonna call for that until we get a balance on that account code. Item number 45, 46, and 47, and 48 are on the agenda. Item 67, 68, 69 are called for. Item number 70 is on the agenda. Item number 72 and 74 are for information. That concludes my report, Madam President. Thank you.
Finance and Planning?
Thank you, Madam President. Item number seven, I'm asking to be held. Item number eight is being called for. Item number nine is now called for. Items 10 and 11, I'm gonna ask both of those to be called for. I think we have some resolutions there with that issue, but I'm asking for them to be called for. Items, the following items are all for information. Items 12, 16, 19, 20, 21, 23, 24, 24A. 32 was enacted. 34, 35, 36 are all for information, as are 36A, 52, and 66. Item 71 is also for information. I heard a request for 34. 34 is for information, please. And that concludes my report.
Our Councilmen, the two items you have on the agenda?
Oh, I don't know what they are. Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
26 and 27?
Yes. So 26 and 27 are both add-ons. We did talk about the ESCOR agreements for the land use applications that we have. So that is on the agenda. And item 27 is a result of the insulting email that we received from the Comptroller regarding the bank account information.
I didn't receive it.
It was received on August 7th. Councilwoman Duarte, thank you for bringing that to my attention. I did not have power, well, there's really no excuse for me not reading my emails, but for this one, I'm gonna use. I'm gonna use, right, we were all on the email. I'm gonna use the excuse that I had no power, but on August 7th, we received, if I may, a letter from Lordysha regarding the bank accounts and their amounts, et cetera. But all of the bank account numbers were redacted, and there was absolutely no financial information on that sheet of paper. At best, that sheet of paper disclosed that we have multiple accounts from JP Morgan and a few accounts at Sterling National Bank with no other information. I found it to be very offensive to the council and to the people of Mount Vernon. Thank you, and that's what brought on item number 27 under Finance and Planning as an add-on. Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call?
Councilwoman Duarte?
Present.
Councilwoman Farkason?
Present.
Councilman Griffith?
Here.
Councilman Thompson?
Here.
And Council President Copeland?
Here. Legislation in Public Works?
Thank you, Madam President. Item number one, I have an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Cityscape Consultants, Inc. with regards to our 5G wireless applications. So moved.
Second.
On the question? Roll call?
Councilwoman Duarte?
Aye.
Councilwoman Farkason?
Aye.
Councilman Griffith? Councilman Thompson?
Aye.
And Council President Copeland?
Aye.
Thank you.
Number two, I have an ordinance authorizing the transfer of funds within the Department of Public Works in the amount of $15,989 from their fuel line to their equipment line to pay for the street sweeper's lease payment. So moved.
Second.
On the question? Roll call?
Councilwoman Duarte?
Aye.
Councilwoman Farkason?
Aye.
Councilman Griffith?
Aye.
Councilman Thompson?
Aye.
And Council President Copeland?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item number three, I have an ordinance requesting permission to add the position of Senior Accountant within the Board of Water Supply. So moved.
Second.
On the question?
Madam President, if I may?
Yes.
I would like to ask Councilwoman Duarte to provide a summary of these changes, you know, well, at least one at a time, to the Board of Water Supply. Because I'm gonna say that the perception, just in looking at this, in this time, you know, might send a different opinion. So I think it's really important to provide an explanation as to why these positions are being proffered. Thank you, Madam President.
Councilwoman Duarte?
Thank you. So with specific, with regards to this position, Senior Accountant, the Board of Water Supply currently has a bookkeeper. And the Commissioner, since implementing a new accounting system called Spraybrook, as a result of the Comptroller denying access to Munis, basically, this new system, everything runs through the general ledger. And he's able to set up proper controls, proper procurement protocols, and as a result, he would like to have someone with accounting experience who can oversee and manage the monthly reconciliations and these controls. And so the addition of this position is for properly maintaining the accounting in the system and making sure that there is the proper oversight and the skills needed to do so.
Thank you. Roll call?
Councilperson Duarte?
Aye.
Councilperson Farkason?
Aye.
Councilman Griffith?
Aye.
Councilman Thompson?
Aye.
And Council President Copeland?
Aye.
Thank you.
Number four, I have an ordinance requesting permission to add two positions of water maintenance worker within the Board of Water Supply. So moved.
Second.
On the question?
Madam President, if I may. Yes, thank you.
Would you explain these?
Yes, the same thing. I'm gonna ask for all of them, Janice.
Yeah, no problem.
Thanks.
Okay. So, the Commissioner, based on information and the management and operations of the department from the superintendent, is to reorganize the department in a way where they can have three field teams. Each field team consists of some water maintenance workers and laborers. By union contract, the laborers cannot work in the field without the supervision of a water maintenance worker. So as a result, they want to be able to have three complete field teams that they can deploy to three different areas of the city at any given time. And based on the needs of the department, they feel that that will satisfactorily allow them to respond and maintain the water supply as needed. So based on that, they're requesting to add these two water maintenance workers at the lower entry level salary in order to promote or elevate two laborers that currently work in the water department to be a water maintenance worker, and therefore allow them to have a full complement of three teams, field teams. And that is the rationale behind adding these two positions of water maintenance worker.
Any other questions?
Not a question, but maybe just on...
Wait, until you're recognized?
Oh, yes, please.
Now I recognize you, Councilman Griffith.
Thank you. I'm glad that I'm treated fairly. Just to say, I know we just had power outages around Mount Vernon. But one thing that we all did have was water service. And we have to be grateful, not only for the quality of water that we have, but if we had a water main break or some type of water disruption, I would hope that the city of Mount Vernon had the staff in place to be able to fix whatever system breaks as soon as possible. Because one thing is absolutely for sure. You can live without cable, internet, even lights. But without a water source for over a number of periods of days, we would literally have to be out of here quickly. So I think we take our water department for granted. We take water for granted because it always flows. We have to think about if it didn't flow, how serious it would be. The city would really have to evacuate. So, thank you, thank you, Councilwoman Duarte, for explaining these positions quite eloquently. I appreciate you for that. Thank you.
Roll call? Oh, you want to say something else?
I just wanted to add.
Oh, roll call?
I can add it later, it's fine.
Councilwoman Duarte?
Aye.
Councilwoman Farkason?
Aye.
Councilperson Griffith?
Aye.
Councilperson Thompson? And Council President Copeland?
Aye.
Thank you.
Number five, I have an ordinance requesting permission to add three positions of labor within the Board of Water Supply. So moved.
Second.
On the question?
Again, Madam President.
Councilwoman Duarte?
Yes, so on the question. So, these three positions of labor that the water commissioner is asking to add are not necessarily three new positions. These positions are currently occupied. This is a correction to the Board of Estimate salary resolutions. All the positions that they currently have in terms of the labor positions are not properly reflected in the salary resolutions. And so in order to be compliant with the unions and all of the other labor laws, this is a correction to that, to add these positions to the salary resolutions.
Madam President, if I may.
No other, two don't have a question on it. Okay, yes.
I just wanted just a clarification, because she said it was a correction. Does it actually say that in the legislation? Councilwoman?
No, it does not say that in the legislation. That is my discussion with the Commissioner, the explanation that he provided.
Right. I'm just wondering if it should reflect that, that this is a salary, you know, should it not say that?
The only problem with it is that the council is really not over the salary. The correction will have to be stated at the Board of Estimate, because that's really who does the salary part.
So then you'll take care of that, Madam President?
Yes.
Thank you.
Roll call?
Councilwoman Duarte?
Aye.
Councilwoman Farkason?
Aye.
Councilman Griffith?
Aye.
Councilman Thompson? And Council President Copeland?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item number six, and the final ordinance requesting permission to add four positions of labor within the Board of Water Supply. So moved.
Second.
On the question? Uh, Councilwoman Duarte?
Thank you. So on the question, this is adding four positions of labor at the lower entry level salary level. And, again, so this is also part of the correction to the Board of Estimate. The only, there actually isn't an addition of labor positions, with the exception of two, the two that they're intending to promote to the maintenance. The two that they're intending to promote to the maintenance worker level opens up two positions in the laborer level. So those two positions are actually, during COVID, they've had to dedicate two laborers to the maintenance of their physical assets. And that includes their buildings, their vehicles. So under the union contract and in discussions with the union, they had to have two laborers dedicated solely for the purpose of sanitizing their physical assets. So in actuality, if we're looking at the net difference between, or the net change of the maintenance workers and the laborers, all the positions are actually accounted for in their 2020 budget, with the exception of the two labor positions. And those are being reimbursed from FEMA for the COVID response. And so with regards to the maintenance worker and laborer positions, there is no net change to their budget. The only position that we're really adding was the item number three, where we added a senior accountant. So that's what's happening in the Board of Water Supply.
Thank you. Thank you. Roll call?
Councilwoman Duarte?
Aye.
Councilwoman Farkason?
Aye.
Councilman Griffith?
Aye.
Councilman Thompson? And Council President Copeland?
Aye.
Thank you.
Human Resources?
Thank you, Madam President.
Second.
On the question? Roll call?
Councilwoman Duarte?
Aye.
Councilwoman Farkason?
Aye.
Councilman Griffith? Councilman Thompson? And Council President Copeland?
Aye.
Thank you.
Second.
On the question? Roll call?
Councilwoman Duarte?
Aye.
Councilwoman Farkason?
Aye.
Councilman Griffith?
Aye.
Councilman Thompson? And Council President Copeland?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Second.
On the question? Roll call?
Councilwoman Duarte?
Aye.
Councilwoman Farkason?
Aye.
Councilman Griffith?
Aye.
Councilman Thompson? Council President Copeland?
Aye.
Thank you.
Second.
On the question? Roll call?
Councilwoman Duarte?
Aye.
Councilwoman Farkason?
Aye.
Councilman Griffith?
Aye.
Councilman Thompson? And Council President Copeland?
Aye.
Thank you.
Second.
On the question?
Question, Madam President.
Yes.
I'm trying to... Yes, Madam President, thank you. So I'm looking at the line item three one six. It's not in, this is Youth Bureau, eight seven three one six. I don't see it in the budget, Madam President. It says miscellaneous, and I don't see it in the budget. I don't see that line item.
If I may. This is one of those light items, Madam President, may I? I believe, Councilwoman Farkason, this is one of those light items that is going to be funded by a grant. And we talked about having in the budget a special accounting for grant items that come in, that we're charged for, and then the revenue from the grant replaces the expense. So since this is a new expense, if you will, it may not be in the budget. So that's why they probably put it under miscellaneous, since it's going to be replaced by the grant. When the grant comes in, it would zero out that miscellaneous line item. So it kind of wouldn't be in the appropriated budget.
Madam President, if I may, I just want to say that we've been provided with guidance, I won't say from where, about being more present, right? In terms of transactions. And I think this is an opportunity for us, because we need something to guide us. We need some information to base this on. And right now, this is dark. You know, and it's not to say that it's not there. This is not casting doubt. This is just saying, how do we account for it? How do we say that we know that this is where this is accounted for? And we're not speculating. So I think we need evidence, and that's all I'm saying, is that we need something that says, some supporting documentation that says that this is coming from X, you know, and the balance in X is Y.
Councilman Thompson, yes. Turn your mic on. Put your mic.
As we can see, we're talking about purchasing 200 laptops for our youth. And we know that this is going to be an necessity going forward with what we're encountering with this pandemic. However, the cost of the forset is seventy-one thousand two hundred forty dollars, as you can see here in the ordinance. But it also explains that the Youth Bureau 2020 budget, there is no cost to the city. And the purchase will be made through the forset grant. So that in itself will be self-explendatory, that it's going to be coming from the grant. It's going to be provided money through a grant. Most of the monies that are afforded to the Youth Bureau are granted monies. So those transactions are not going to hurt the pockets of the city or the taxpayers, because these are all granted monies.
Madam President, if I may just respond briefly. Did you want to go, Councilman?
No, why don't you go ahead, and then I can maybe...
You know, Councilman Thompson, I appreciate that explanation. I really do. I chaired the HR department last year. And what I'm going to say is, this is not about whether or not it's a good idea. This has to do with our fiduciary responsibilities and understanding whether or not... See, because there's a grant in the 1.12 million, I think it is, in the Youth Bureau, which is a five-year reimbursable, right? But we've never seen any accounting. Everything gets billed out of it, but we don't know. We don't know whether we've spent one million, five hundred thousand. We don't know. And we don't know if it's even being reimbursed. I asked for evidence, right? For whether or not the money is being reimbursed. We don't know. We just don't know. So it's not about whether this is a good idea for our children. We are agreed on that. Our children need technology to help them. We are agreed on that. Seventy-one thousand, it's not going to break the bank, but it's still money that needs to be accounted for. And the system of accounting for it is what we need to be looking at, because that's what we've been advised to do, to pay closer attention to things like this.
Thank you. Councilman Griffith?
So if I may, as a thirty-year accountant, right, I agree. We've always had this problem in our budget lines. So now, since the council has been charged and really challenged to put policies in place, financial policies in place, I suggest, as I've been telling everybody in City Hall, that if you have a policy that needs to be put in place, especially when it comes to finance, please present that to the council. And this one, we've said that we were going to do this in the previous budget as well, right? So allow me to work with, especially the Youth Bureau, right, who may already have their numbers held upstairs. And then what we probably need to do is take their information, as they know the information to flow, and then put a policy together, and then have the comptroller report that information as we need it to be reported, right? Because 100% we agree with you. Our budget is confusing to the layperson's eyes. And that may be strategic, when you don't want to reveal everything. But at the end of the day, transparency wins across the board. So you're right. If there's a grant, especially grants that we have to pay the money out before we get the money back, we need to be able to account for that money that we put out. It should be in like a suspense fund specifically to the line item, so that when the money comes back in, we can see if we spent five dollars more, a hundred dollars more, that may be, and we may be able to cover those small expenses. But the transparency of knowing that we had to spend a little bit more or spend a little bit less is what we're asking for. So let's talk to the Youth Bureau about putting together some kind of process around how these grants end up... And actually, the planning department also needs to do this, right? Because the planning department now has, or had they have been asking for, a compliance officer. And the compliance officer would solely have the purpose of getting the grant, right? Spending the money for the grant, but then proving to the grantee that we did everything that we were supposed to do, right? Because it's very possible that we can buy these computers, but if you don't produce the receipts to the grantee that you bought the computers and that the computers are being used as they were intended to be used, the grantee could refuse to send the money. And that's how sometimes we're held, holding the bag, and then having to figure out how to fill in those blanks. So yes, now that we're in a mode of producing policies for the comptroller, I think that's what we need to do. And if I may add one more thing, there's entities in this city that should be separately funded as well. My example has always been our parking garages, right? The coins that go for the parking garages should pay to repair the parking garages first. The money shouldn't go into the general fund, but then DPW to have to beg for money for the parking garages. So all of this hidden accounting, that where everything flows into the general fund. Mr. Monroe spoke about the telecom money coming in, getting hidden into the general fund. And then when it's time to protect our city from those telecom companies, there's no money to be found, and we have to find money when the money is already there. So I think we need to really start to put our accounting hats on and really devise policies for the comptroller to follow for instances like this and other instances in the city. Thank you.
Yeah, I agree. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. So roll call, on it?
Councilwoman Duarte?
Aye.
Councilwoman Farkason?
Aye.
Councilman Griffith?
Aye.
Councilman Thompson?
Aye.
Council President Copeland?
Aye.
Thank you.
I have an ordinance granting permission to the Youth Bureau to purchase 1,200 face shields. So move.
Second.
On the question? Roll call?
Councilwoman Duarte?
Aye.
Councilwoman Farkason?
Aye.
Councilman Griffith?
Aye.
Councilman Thompson?
Aye.
Council President Copeland?
Aye.
Thank you.
I have an ordinance amending ordinance number fourteen adopted February thirteenth, 2020, entitled "An Ordinance Authorizing the Mayor to Enter Into an Intermunicipal Agreement with the Westchester County Youth Bureau." So move.
Second.
On the question? Roll call?
Councilwoman Duarte?
Aye.
Councilwoman Farkason?
Aye.
Councilman Griffith? Councilman Thompson?
Aye.
And Council President Copeland?
Aye.
Thank you.
I have an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a renewal application with the Westchester County Health Department for food service at the Armory Senior Center. So move.
Second.
On the question? Roll call?
Councilwoman Duarte?
Aye.
Councilwoman Farkason?
Aye.
Councilman Griffith? Councilman Thompson?
Aye.
Council President Copeland?
Aye.
Thank you.
My last one, I have an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a renewal application with the Westchester County Health Department for food service at the Dole Senior Center. So move.
Second.
On the question? Roll call?
Councilwoman Duarte?
Aye.
Councilwoman Farkason?
Aye.
Councilman Griffith? Councilman Thompson?
Aye.
And Council President Copeland?
Aye.
Thank you.
Public safety, it goes.
Thank you, Madam President. I have an ordinance authorizing the Department of Public Safety Chief and Deputy Chief of Operations to join the New York City State Chiefs of Police. So moved.
Second. On the question? Roll call?
Councilwoman Duarte?
Aye.
Councilwoman Farkason?
Aye.
Councilman Griffith?
Aye.
Councilman Thompson?
Aye.
Council President Copeland?
Aye.
Thank you.
So, Madam President, the item enumerated as seventeen, I actually called for it. So do I hold it on the floor, Madam President?
Yes.
Okay, so I'd like to hold item seventeen on the floor, so that it comes back. Item number eighteen, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Division of Criminal Justice Services for the New York State Department of Criminal Justice Services. Guns Involved Violence Elimination 2021 Grant. So moved.
Second. On the question? Roll call?
Councilwoman Duarte?
Aye.
Councilwoman Farkason?
Aye.
Councilman Griffith?
Aye.
Councilman Thompson?
Aye.
Council President Copeland?
Aye.
Thank you.
I have an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Division of Criminal Justice Services for the New York State Department of Criminal Justice Services. Gun Involved Violence Elimination 2019, 2020 Grant. So moved.
Second. On the question? Roll call?
Councilwoman Duarte?
Aye.
Councilwoman Farkason?
Aye.
Councilman Griffith?
Aye.
Councilman Thompson?
Aye.
And Council President Copeland?
Aye.
Thank you.
I have an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Division of Criminal Justice Services for the New York State Department of Criminal Justice Services. Gun Involved Violence Elimination 2018, 2019 Grant. So moved.
Second. On the question?
Madam President, if I may, so it seems like, based on my understanding, no one spoke to me about these, but my reading of the referral, it seems like these were grants that were not applied for in the previous years. Corporation Council, do you have any knowledge on these grants, these criminal justice grants? I mean, I see where, you know, there's a letter from the governor and that, you know, that says that the money was available. It seems like it was not accessed. So what's the explanation?
You have to find a mic. You have to speak into it.
Okay, yeah, let me know. I'm going to go ahead and pass it anyway, because it's a grant, and it seems like the money is available, so we won't hold it up any further, but I'd still like to have the explanation. Thanks so much. So, thank you, Madam President. Thank you.
Roll call?
Councilwoman Duarte?
Aye.
Councilwoman Farkason?
Aye.
Councilman Griffith?
Aye.
Councilman Thompson? And Council President Copeland?
Aye.
Thank you.
I have an ordinance granting permission for two members of the police department to attend a training course. So moved.
Second. On the question? Roll call?
Councilwoman Duarte?
Aye.
Councilwoman Farkason?
Aye.
Councilman Griffith?
Aye.
Councilman Thompson?
Aye.
And Council President Copeland?
Aye.
Thank you.
I have an ordinance authorizing the City of Mount Vernon to accept a donation of family care packages from Colgate. So moved.
Second. On the question?
Madam President, I just want to go on record acknowledging the role of Anitra Hadley and Dawn Marie Fields in getting this very large donation for our city of personal care items from Colgate. So I just wanted to acknowledge that and to say thank you very much on behalf of this county and the city. Thank you, Madam President. Thank you.
Roll call?
Councilwoman Duarte?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilwoman Farkason?
Aye.
Councilman Griffith?
Aye.
Councilman Thompson?
Aye.
And Council President Copeland?
Aye.
Thank you.
Um, I have an ordinance to reclassify the title of senior keyboard specialist, the records clerk within the Department of Public Safety, so moved.
Second.
On the question? Roll call?
Councilwoman Duarte?
Aye.
Councilwoman Farkason?
Aye.
Councilman Griffith?
Aye.
Councilman Thompson?
Aye.
And Council President Copeland?
Aye.
Thank you.
Madam President, I respectfully ask that the next two items be held on the floor, twenty-four and twenty-five, pending further information. That concludes my referrals, Madam President.
Thank you. Finance and planning?
Yeah, the, no, it's a letter regarding the balances in that. So, I'm asking the deputy clerk to, or, you know, or somebody to follow up, yeah.
To find the, we need the balances of the accounts that these, for number twenty seventeen, twenty-four, and twenty-five. How much money is in account number, uh, A one three, A three one two oh point four one six?
Repeat again. A one, A?
Or you could just look in the ordinance. A three one two oh point four one six.
Thank you, Madam President.
Uh, finance and planning?
Thank you, Madam President. I have an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Mount Vernon to designate Zaren and Steinmetz, or a future entity, as escrow agent to establish and manage escrow accounts necessary in the review of land use applications before the City Council, so moved.
Second.
On the question? Uh, Councilwoman Farkason?
So, I'm looking at what the code says about escrows. And, um, best I can determine, in, you know, in section two sixty-seven dash twenty-eight, which is standards and requirement for specific special permit uses, um, it says that the money an applicant shall deposit with the city funds sufficient to reimburse the city for all reasonable cost of consultant and expert evaluation, consultation to the city in connection with the review of any application. It seems like the code is saying that the, um, money must be deposited with the city, but this says it's going to be deposited with them?
It's, uh, Madam President?
Councilman Griffith, I was gonna say corp counsel, go ahead, Councilman.
It's, it's, it's not the city's money, nor is it their money, it's escrow money.
I understand, but I'm just going by what the code says.
Right, but it's, it's not the city's money, it's escrow money.
Yeah, but that, yeah, I know, and, and, but it's for this special permits, right? It's for this application process. And based on what this is telling me, it says that the money should be deposited with the city. And so, that, that's all I'm saying, is that the code provides guidance, and so...
No, somebody just peeked in, that's why, I, I would look, I'm sorry. Corp Counselor, did you have something to add to that?
Well, I understand that it was intended to add the escrow account created, uh, with the office of the Comptroller's Office, and the, it was not a successful attempt. Uh, and so, land use projects have to move along. And, um, so, this is-
This is a workaround?
This is a workaround, quite frankly, to keep the business of the city moving, um, so-
The City Council of White Plains did something, just-
Right, right.
This exact thing.
The, the argument is that, the, that the, that they're not directly city funds, they're being paid, they are developers who are create, you know, are responsible for the legal fees for the, um, for the escrow. And so, it, this ordinance outlines how that would happen. So, if the city can't fiscally manage to keep the city moving along, uh, we can't stop the business of the city.
Uh, well, we don't want to stop the business of the city, certainly, but, Madam President, if I may.
Did it, before you speak, you know, or you speak again, did either of the other two council people want to say anything? Okay, hold that thought. Councilman Thompson? Please put your mic.
I think it would be a great idea for an outward entity, if you will, to collect the escrow funds, um, being how our comptroller has mismanaged our city funds thus far. Um, right now, our school is still in a disarray, where they have laid off upwards of fifty employees because the comptroller has not rendered their somewhat, uh, twenty, twenty-seven million dollars. So, do we need any lawsuits going forward with the comptroller dealing with escrow funds that she refuses to turn over? If she cannot legitimately, um, be held accountable for our funds within the city, God forbid we give her control over builders' funds and, and she does, she does what she wants with those funds. So, I think it would be a great idea to, um, have someone else represent those escrow funds, um, to keep us in the clear at this time. That is all.
I have not had any conversations with the comptroller. I have been emailing there, um, people trying to add this up, so at some point, comptroller will be down. To assist with establishing the escrow funds, then maybe we could do it in a manner which you suggest. Absent that happening, we cannot come to a standstill, uh, as it relates to land use issues. People have a lot of money and time invested, and projects need to move along.
Oh, okay. My turn, Madam President?
Yes.
So, you know, um, and I hear all the concerns, but again, I go back to what the code says. So, the code says that the applicant will deposit the money in an account with the city. So, we don't get to make up, even with the most difficult comptroller in the world, we don't get to make up how escrow is handled. We have to follow what the code says. So, um-
Do you have any suggestions?
Council, Councilman Griffith?
If I may, um, Councilwoman Farkason, where, where do you-
Two sixty-seven dash twenty-eight.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not seeing that here, because I'm ready to just repeal it, if that's gonna make you satisfied.
It says, "An applicant shall deposit with the city funds sufficient to reimburse the city for all reasonable cost of consultant and expert evaluation." Um, so it's, it's under the code, part two, general legislation zoning.
It says to reimburse the city.
Wait, to reimburse the city for all reasonable cost of consultant and expert evaluation. You found it, Corporation Council?
Well, I, no, I didn't.
No, I didn't find it. Could you, could you please, again, two sixty-seven?
Well, first off, if we're talking about reimbursement-
It says zone, but we're talking about-
If we're talking about reimbursement, that, a reimbursement is something that the city pays for in advance and receives in. That's not what's happening. This is more direct. But anyway, what is-
I'm not seeing where you are, Councilwoman Farkason.
Okay, so I'm in Article six?
Okay.
Special permit uses?
Yes.
Do you see that?
Yes.
Section B.
Section D?
B, B as in boy.
Review and decision?
Two sixty-seven dash twenty-eight is what you're saying?
Yeah, let's see, I mean, let me just see. Go on down, no, no, go on down.
Section B is, uh-
Go on down past signage, eleven lock size, and setback, twelve retention of expert assistance and reimbursement by applicant. Section twelve, and then under section twelve. Just keep scrolling down.
I'm not seeing where you are.
Do you see where I am, Corporation Council?
I'm looking, I'm looking.
Thank you. You know, do a search of escrow?
No, I, 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 I'm, I'm here, it's the lengthy-
Yeah, it is a lengthy.
But here's what I'm inclined to say. This has been a matter that, as, along with many other matters, um, to which there has not been movement-
Yeah.
-to start, that, and areas where, um, there, these are just, have been, uh, just pro forma kinds of actions that are not taking place and is stymying the growth of the city. And I don't really think that it's in the city's best interest to publicly have this comment. Uh, too much commentary about this.
Okay.
Particularly if it's a legal matter and there's a legal difference of opinion, I don't want to have that.
I just wanted to, to, yeah.
But-
Excuse me? If you look on that, that character, the Councilwoman is citing, who chairs the City's Consultants Expertship.
So, let me wait, say, excuse me, excuse me? So, you have the correct address, right?
I'm sorry.
Okay.
This is the good side.
Okay, I'm looking, two sixty-seven, dash A, which is standards and requirements. I'm sorry, it's a little, uh, it's more, more stringent.
Section twelve talks about retention of experts.
It's talking about having consultants and agents. The municipal office decision, uh, or, I think it's contemplating this kind of service for the youth.
To include, um, an escrow agent.